Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Landwehr?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Lee is not here. I understand she contacted.
Yep.
And Ms. Palmer here.
Great, thank you. As is our custom, our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Next on our agenda is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Laura, second by Lori. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, motion as carried. The announcements, May 14th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the district community room. May 21st, Tuesday, 5:30 PM is a school board work session here in the community room. May 27th, Monday, no school, Memorial Day. May 28th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mister Chair members, there is no correspondence tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening is communication of the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board, however, will not take any action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board this evening? All right, doesn't look like it. We will move on. Next is our consent agenda, consisting of the personnel report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion by Laura, seconded by Scott. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion as carried. Next on our agenda is acknowledgement of contributions. Bear with me here, we have a lot this evening, which is wonderful. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gift for any proper purchase, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in this amount, $10,000. Tonight, we have a donation of $100 to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Nikia Jensen and Erica Linder, an anonymous donation of $1,200 to Columbia Heights Public Schools, and then the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. The Columbia Heights High School class of 1976, $750. Midwest Vending, $250. Cop Family Foundation, $1,750. Barbara Berg, $200. The Fridley Lions Club, $2,000. Malcolm Watson, $1,500. Constance Hansen, $25. Edward Rapp, $100. Carmen Tagg, thank you, $50. Gail Hubel, Hubel?
Hubel.
Hubel, thank you, $25. Ann O'Neal, $100. Dean Miley, $50. Wayne Kutske, $50. Gordon Olson, $250. Katie McAvoy, $50. Ron Caldwell, $100. Roger and Karen Sodlowski, $100. Patricia Sawada, $25. Ann Farnham, $200. Michelle Edwards, $50. Glenda Glor, $50. Ron Margot, $50. E. Paul Terry, $50. Robert Uy, $25. Mary Lee Olin, $50. Betty Justin, $100. Luen Re-Stad, $50, thank you. Jan Vaughn, $100. Al Ogde, $50. Robert Benson, $100. Nancy Hornbrook, $50. Kathleen Kane, $100. Pamela Sigerson, $100. Value in Kind, donation of books at Valley View Elementary from Christopher Johnson, estimated value $50. Donation of two gaming chairs to Columbia Heights Academy from Donald and Ann Carter for student support, estimated value $100. Donation of art supplies to Columbia Academy by Lisa Greer for art classes, estimated value of $30. And donation of books to Valley View Elementary by Mark II for school use, estimated value $20. Total fiscal year 2012-2013 monetary contributions to date, $47,067.38. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Do I have a, we do a motion, or is this a resolution?
Resolution.
So we need a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ted, seconded by John. Any discussion on acknowledgement of contributions?
I just want to say our scholarship evening night is just fantastic. If you have a chance to come, I highly encourage you to come.
Very good comment. All right, any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Landwehr?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda is discussion reports and information items. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. We will start with Ms. Meyer.
Let's see, I was able to attend the MSBA Phase III training on building high-performing school boards. Learned quite a bit about the different phases of forming teams, the norming, storming, forming, and different styles, and it was really a fun day and got to do a lot of watching school boards and looking at how they do things and being able to critique the videos and things, so it was quite an interesting day. And then I was also able to attend the Valley View Carnival a couple Fridays ago, which was really fun and very well attended, so I hope they raised a lot of money.
Great.
That was it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Landwehr?
I was also at the Phase III training today with Member Larkin, and just seeing all the mistakes that could be made in a board meeting was very sobering, and it was great to see, be aware of that, so I'm very high-sensitive to that now. I also attended a WMAP board meeting to kind of get up to speed on what's happening with WMAP, and went to the work session last week and also to NSBA convention out in San Diego. NSBA stands for National School Board Association. One of the things that we made us sensitive to today is to not use educational acronyms a lot, so I'm just going to try to not do that so everybody knows what we're talking about. And that's it, thank you.
Great, thanks. Mr. Larkin?
Um, let's see, we'll start with, I think it was the 10th, Sister Cities had their art show, and I was able to attend and got to see not only just a tremendous amount of beautiful art, but there was poetry, there was judging, the elementary all-school choir performed, the Columbia Academy jazz band performed, it was just, it was a really fun night. The work session I attended last Thursday, here, they had the unveiling of the artwork for the Heritage Tower. Again, just tremendous, I'm just truly impressed with what the kids are able to do. Highland and Valley View, thanks both of you for having it on the same night, but they had their Fine Arts Festival slash choir-band concerts, and I had the opportunity to stop at Highland, I got to see all the artwork, they had some type of a science, I don't know if it was technically a science fair, similar to what Columbia Academy does, and then I got to hear their choir sing and/or perform. And then at Valley View, I had the opportunity to, again, look at all the art that the kids have done, and the 5th grade band was performing when we were there, and again, just a phenomenal job. It's really exciting to see what the kids are doing at that level. The variety show at Columbia Academy was Friday night, a very entertaining show. I think that's actually available, is it on the school's website now? I know that the Islander had done, or was working on doing a video of that, so if it's on, take advantage of it. The kids, again, for kids of that age to stand in front of their peers and sing, dance, and in some instances just be silly and have a good time doing it, very impressed, again, with how they did. Phase III training today, as Member Landwehr mentioned, was extremely enlightening. Had an opportunity prior to this meeting, we met with a focus group for the Gifted and Talented, the Blue Ribbon Study that they're currently doing. And then I also attended the conference in San Diego, so that's it.
A lot.
It's been busy, but it's been fun.
Yeah, good. Ms. Palmer?
I had a very busy week. Twice I tried to attend the Fine Arts Fair over at Highland, and the first one was postponed until this past Thursday, so yeah, and then they had, the fun thing is the artwork, without a doubt, wandering around, and one of the fun ones that I saw was where they took, they took cute little sayings like "when pigs fly," and the kids all did their interpretations of them. I must have laughed so hard, just looking at all the different ways you can interpret that into an art form, so that was a lot of fun. And then the concert, I attended the one earlier in the year, the kids were just playing these, you know, short little clips, and now they're playing full songs, and that's just in the course of a year, and what a fabulous job they're doing over there, just a fabulous job. That was so neat. The other thing I attended as well was our 916, which is our Special Education District that we participate in, and the main focus of that meeting was to talk about the upcoming plans for Carner Blue, which is going to be the name of the building that they're, that they're going to be built, a special-use facility that they're going to be building, looks like up in Blaine. And the reason that they had chosen Carner Blue was because that is a butterfly that is, was indigenous to Anoka County, that actually was primary, its primary home was up and down this 65 corridor, so I thought that was really interesting, and plus the shape of the building, it kind of looks a little bit like a dragonfly, a butterfly, so that was really, really, really interesting, and I really hope to see what more develops. Maybe we can take some sort of a site visit at some point when they get that done. I also attended the Heritage Tower presentation and saw the artwork from the, that was put together, it's such a great thing that we're actually, that the city and the schools are kind of working together to build, to build a long-lasting memorial, and to have the kids' art input into something that everybody is going to drive by on a regular basis and see, and to have the kids participate in that instead of hiring some artists, you know, from New York or whatever to come in and do their interpretation of what Columbia Heights is, I think that this is going to be something that we can really hang our hat on, and they did such a great job. And let me see, oh, I also attended the work session, and earlier today, the Gifted and Talented Focus Group, and I really look forward to seeing stuff that comes out of that, and, you know, trying to make sure that we're always moving forward with our Gifted and Talented program, bringing more opportunities to our kids, so, thank you.
You were busy, too?
I was very busy, yes.
Great. I also was at the Heritage Tower unveiling, it was very, high alcohol, the contacts were made, it was very impressive, really enjoyed that a lot. Also, last night I had the opportunity to go to a, I would say, art show that was put on by our representative Keith Ellison down at University of Minnesota facility, it's an urban liaison sort of thing, which was really cool. Columbia Heights was well-represented, two students, had artwork down there and received awards, which was very nice. I had lovely meetings with Superintendent Kelly. I also attended the National School Boards Association, that, you know, some of us will talk about in the coming board meeting about what, you know, made light bulbs appear above our heads or whatever that we learned. The work session, and I'm sure I'm forgetting something else, but that's all I can remember. Thank you. Superintendent Kelly?
Chairman and members, I had the delight to be able to attend with members of the school board, the National School Boards Conference, and I enjoyed learning both with them and with other school board members across, and superintendents across the United States, and that will be a topic in May, and I look forward to sharing some of that, of what, the light bulbs that went off in my head as well with all of you. I attended Rotary, and I would like to publicly thank the Rotary for the dictionaries that they distributed to the 3rd graders, students for their personal use. It's very, very exciting for them to be able to take the dictionaries home and to use them, so they did that at all the elementaries, and I want to thank the principals and the directors that were involved in that as well. I, too, attended the Heritage Tower press conference, and I want to give a special thanks to the city of Columbia Heights, because not only did the students have an opportunity to do real-world artwork, but they got a chance to connect with their heritage and their roots, and that's, to me, priceless. We have such a great staff that that doesn't happen with a lot, without a lot of guidance, and so I want to thank all the staff that was involved in that. On a more somber note, the administration team has been working very intensely on the process of staffing, and that continues to roll out and be a topic of discussion. I had coffee and conversations with several members of the community in the last week, and meetings with individual members of the school board, including the chair, and that concludes my report for tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Member Meyer and myself were also at the Gifted and Talented Focus Group, forgot about that, for the record.
Yeah.
And we were all at the work study.
Yep.
As was I.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, it looks like we're doing building vision cards for the high school. So tonight we have Dwayne Burkus, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Joan Keratoff, our Columbia Heights High School Principal.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, pleased to be here tonight with Principal Keratoff from the high school to talk about their vision card. I read somewhere the other day that the second most stressful job in the world is being a high school teacher, right after being an air traffic control person. I would guess that the principal, high school principal's probably right up in that area, too, so, but we're pleased to be here to talk with you about the high school's challenges and the good things that are happening there. This past week, we've been doing focus groups on the AP program and the pre-AP program through our Gifted and Talented Focus Group. We had the opportunity today to sit down with a really fine group of AP students from the high school and talk to them about their AP courses, their teachers, the high school. And I think what struck both Principal Bustman and I, who was there as well, was how positive they were about their experience in those classes, and that the teachers that they had in terms of their content knowledge, but also the dedication to them of giving their own time, a tremendous amount of time, to those kids to help them pass those tests, to be able to gain that knowledge. So we've got a great bunch of kids, and we've got a great bunch of teachers, and we're proud of our high school. And we have challenges, and we'll talk about some of those tonight that we have to solve, and then there's great things that are happening as well, and we wanted to highlight those also. But as usual, I'm going to pass it off to our principal, Keratoff, to talk about that, yeah.
Good evening, Chair Bardell, board members, Superintendent Kelly. I am here to present the high school scorecard. As Director Burkus said, we know what we have to work on, and we do work very hard on that, and I have an amazing staff and an amazing group of students who every day come to that building excited about learning and teaching them. So to go through some of our background data, our enrollment over the last three years has declined. We have, actually, I'll talk about that later in the presentation, because we have some goals set around that as a staff, and what we're doing to help try to encourage more students to come here in addition to keeping the students we have. Our demographics have changed significantly as well. When I started here, the year later, we were talking 30, 30, 30. That's no longer the case at the high school. The high school has 38% African-American, 29% white, 24% Hispanic, and 4% and 5% Asian and American Indian, respectfully. Our demographics, this actually is from October 1st, and it shows that we were 71% free and reduced lunch on October 1st. We are now over 76%, which means that we will be a Title I school next year. Demographically in the EL and the Special Education, we are at 17% equally across the board, and I find that just so strange that they ended up with the same percentages. I did watch the elementaries and the middle school presentations, and I know that we are a community that is ever-changing, and I anticipate some changes in this area in the near future. Our MCA grad data, I actually put the percentages near every column to show that we know where we have work to do. In math, we did take a drop last year, and we dropped to 19%, but we've been doing some amazing things this year to try to get that score back to at least 31, if not higher, next year, or this year, they just tested last week, so. Our reading scores, it kind of took a little dip last year, but we are on a steady incline, and we have a lot of goals around reading and writing in our district and in our building, so we anticipate that to go up higher. We are very proud of our writing scores. Our writing scores, students need to take the writing, the reading, and in the future, the math to graduate from high school, and that is a requirement, and we have 83% from last year that passed it on the first time. And then our science scores are slowly but surely inclining, or, yeah, on the increase. We went from 22% the previous year to 27%, and I'll talk a little bit more about each one of these, if we have a goal at the high school set around each one. The Strategic Direction Scorecard A, you're all familiar with this, and this is the expanding access and opportunities by turbocharging what works and redesigning what needs to be better. So I'm just going to walk you through each and every one. A1 is Use of Articulated Standards-Based Curriculum, and we have 85% of all classes either started or completed, and by the end of the year, we anticipate that all 85% of those will be completed by June. Use of Licensed Staff, actively engaged in PLCs for questions on, monthly, at the minimum. We have many staff who meet together and talk about data, but regarding the formal process of a PLC, we are just starting that process at the high school. We are analyzing the book Learning by Design by Du Force, who's been the pioneer in the PLC framework, but we do have 57% of our staff who do meet regularly, weekly if not daily, a bottom-round student, and those are teachers in our math department, our engineering and our physics collaborative, our AVID program, we have a site team that meets monthly, our EL teachers work very closely together, and our Special Education Department meets weekly, and they talk specifically about students and what students need. And so it's not a PLC, but it's very similar in some of the questions that they answer.
That would be professional learning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's easy to do.
Board Chair, Board Landwehr, yeah, we, I will try to get as many of the letters explained. Because we do have some AVID is Achievement Via Individual Determination, and EL is our English Language Learners. Use of Effective Teaching Strategies Resulting in Student Engagement in the Learning Objectives Through Walkthrough Protocol Feedback and Coaching. Through Formal and Informal Evaluations or Walk-throughs, we do have 90% of our teachers who are engaging students in the learning process. Presence of Multi-Tierred Interventions for Academics in Reading and Math. We have multiple interventions for students who need interventions. Some of them that I listed here are our Special Ed and our EL support classes for students, we have study skills classes for students in the Special Ed Department. We have a new pre-algebra intervention that we started last year, where if students aren't being successful at Algebra I, catching them early, putting them in pre-algebra, getting the foundations, and then letting them have an opportunity for success to do well by the time they graduate and to pass those tests. The math department has also really solidified their mastery quizzes. We have MCA classes in reading and writing in the schedule during the daytime, and we have after-school math support for the MCAs. We have a lot of online learning offerings for credit recovery, and we are expanding our summer school options next year, so every student has an opportunity to grow and excel when they need it. Parent Involvement, Lessons and Ideas Present in School Communications and Events. When we figured out the number on this, we figured because not, we don't always have active numbers or emails, we do send out a bimonthly newsletter that's put out by me and our staff. We do have an additional senior newsletter, informational bulletin that goes out that describes the whole graduation process from prom on to when they cross that stage. We do new back-to-school registration nights that we started two summers ago, where we invite the parents in to work through the schedule with their students, what they signed up for the previous spring, to sign up for clubs and activities and be involved and sign up in that way. We have increased our amount of all-call announcements that we've done, and I'm sure some of you love hearing my voice on a Sunday night. That is me, by the way. We had REACH in our building this year, and that was a very exciting program. We had over 30 parents participate in that program. We have EL and AVID, which, once again, or REACH, I couldn't tell you what REACH stands for.
I think it's this one they're aware of, yeah, the Family Involvement, Family Education, Parent Education Program.
Okay, there we go. And FAFSA, which is the, the, the form that parents have to fill out for student aid for college, we held our second annual FAFSA informational night, where we actually sit, parents bring their information to that night, and we work through the process on the computers, and they actually apply on that night. And we do have multiple curriculum nights throughout the year. So we try to get out as much information as we can to all of our parents about all of the activities and communications that are happening in our school. Participation in the Arts and Activities and Athletics. We are actively working with our Activities Department to ensure that we have accurate numbers. Last year, it was approximately 55% that were participating in athletics, but we know that there are a lot of clubs and activities where students are meeting, and we just want to make sure we have accurate numbers. So it is listed as a Level 1, but we will get more information to you. Participation Gap Between Student Groups Participating in the Arts, Activities, and Athletics Groups Such as Gender Free and Reduced Lunch and Ethnicity. In athletics, because that is really the only true data that we had, there is an 11% difference between male and female, so we could have put yellow blocks on two of these, but in regards to actual participation among ethnicity, we have 36% participation among our white students, 31% participation among our black students, and 19% participation of our Latino students for a 17% gap. Parent Engagement in Points of Contact Grades E Through 12. We are planning a survey to be done by the end of the school year, but once again, we don't have data to give to you, so will, to be determined. Strategic Direction B, this is to innovate, innovate to close the achievement gap with accountability and efficiency. This is all about our scores. So last year, when we were giving the NWEA MAP test, and that just stands for the organization and one of the, one of the tests that we use to assess where our students are, last year, and this data is all from the last school year, because we still don't have our accurate numbers from this school year, 61% of Columbia Heights High School students achieved their growth goal in math on the MAP test, so that put us at a Level 4. The MAP Growth in the Reading by Student, we had 49% of our Columbia Heights High School students achieve the reading growth goal, to put us at a Level 3. The Percentages of Students By Student Group Meeting NWEA MAP Growth Targets, the greatest gap was 11%. We had 51% of our black students meet their goals, and we had 40% of our white students meet their goals. The MCA reading scores, as we saw in one of the earlier slides, we had 53% of Columbia Heights High Schools scoring proficient or higher. There are two different ranges in the proficiency, one is exceeding proficiency, so we had 53% in that category. As you saw on the previous slide, the MCA math scores for all grades tested, 19% of our students scored in the proficient range on the MCA math test. And for the science scores, we had 27% of Columbia Heights High School students scoring in the proficient range or higher on the MCA science tests. The MCA Gap to Standard for Student Groups in Reading or Math, the greatest gap was in the reading, not in the math, it was in the reading, it was 30%. Our white students had 65% proficiency or higher, and our Hispanic students had 35%. Our ACT Plan, the explorers given at the 8th grade, we give the plan at 10th grade at the high school. Our college and career readiness benchmarks in each of the four at the high school. Our college and career readiness benchmarks in each of the four content areas, we had eleven percent of our students meet all four of those benchmarks. And we're working diligently because we are focusing on college and career readiness at the high school, which we'll talk more about. Our equity and ACT plan, the college readiness benchmark, the biggest gap was between white and black students. Twenty-nine percent of our white students met proficient, or twenty-nine percent of met the four benchmarks, whereas four percent of the black. ACT participation in grades eleven and twelve, and this one was a little tricky to answer because we had twenty-five percent of our students in eleventh and twelfth grade last year take the ACT. But a lot of seniors, if they get the score they want their junior year, they don't take it their senior year. So out of our graduating class last year, we had forty-six percent of our graduates take the ACT over that two-year benchmark. ACT composite scores of students in our district since eighth grade. This is always something that people ask, well, how did our students who've been with us for all five years do? And their score was twenty-one point one on average, and that is right in line with the state. And referrals out of class last year, our behavior referrals, we had eleven hundred and fifty-five behavior referrals last year, which was almost cut in half from the previous year. The difference between student groups in referrals out of class, our largest gap is between our black students. Our black students are only thirty-eight percent of our population, but they attribute to fifty-nine percent of our referrals. And our out-of-school suspension, we had a hundred and sixty-three incidents last year. Our AP, which we're all doing an analysis as a district about our, our gifted and talented, as everyone's heard, last year, we were right on the cusp of this, but we had nineteen percent of our students in the graduating class take an AP test and pass it with a three or better, although we encourage all of our students to take it, whether they feel they're ready for it or not. If they've gone through the program, it's just good practice, and so we had nineteen percent pass with a three or higher. Our graduation rate, the state two years ago changed their model of how to project graduation rates, and I remember presenting this at the board, I think it was two years ago. We have been in the low eighties all along, and so we had eighty-one percent last year, but in regards to this chart, that's in the sixty-sixth percentile of the state. Post-secondary enrollment, we had over sixty percent of Columbia Heights High School graduates last year enrolled in college, and through our sleds, we're able to gather that data now, which is very exciting for us. But we have two college and career readiness programs that are programs that are built within our school, and that is AVID, which is achievement via individual determination, and it's College Possible. I did change it to from Admission Possible because they've changed their name. Out of those two groups of students who have, out of that, those two groups, we've had ninety-nine point six percent of our students who are still enrolled in college. We only have two students that are not enrolled in college at the time. So to get around our goals, we know we have work to do, and I put last year's scores on here so that we can kind of see where we are. As a district and as a school, we made a commitment that we would try to increase our litter, our literacy and our students on the reading MCA test by ten percent. So we said by spring of two thousand thirteen, sixty-three percent of Columbia Heights High School 10th grade students will score at proficient level or higher on the MCA reading test. By spring of two thousand thirteen, remember, we had eighty-three percent pass last year. We're hoping for eighty-seven percent passing the writing test the first time on their grad MCA writing test. We have a lot of professional development around it. These are just a few of those items. Teachers, they set personal goals with me at the beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year, they reflect on those, and those are set around our building goals. So they all have individual ones that they're working on within their classrooms. AVID strategies in reading and writing in all classes are being used. We have worked collaboratively with the Minnesota, University of Minnesota and the Minnesota Writing Project, where all of our teachers have set action research plans and where they're, they're, it's all around writing. And that's at all subjects. Our SMART goal for math, by spring of two thousand thirteen, thirty-two percent of Columbia Heights High School students will have a score of proficient or higher on the MCA test. The reason we put that at thirty-two percent was because a year ago, we were at thirty-one percent, and we feel like there was, we, we don't know all the reasons why it took such a dip, but we have, we anticipate that we will be there, if not higher, again this year. And the reason that we feel that way is because of those personal goals that teachers set, the AVID strategies that, that the, that all the math teachers are using, such as Cornell notes. We have that pre-algebra intervention that I mentioned. We're using a computer program called ST Math for students to get that foundation in math. The teachers have worked really hard on improving those mastery quizzes. Our teachers have put YouTube videos to kind of do learning at home, so that students, when they get stuck, they can, they can go and see their teacher teaching something. So at least one, but usually two YouTube videos are available, available around every mastery skill that they're doing on the mastery quizzes. And altogether, they have calculated that over six thousand views have happened on those mastery quizzes. And they have now, we always talk about Algebra I and geometry, but our Algebra II and our trigonometry are higher, higher level math, excuse me, that they now are doing cumulative reviews about foundations and reviewing Algebra I as they're working on Algebra II, just to make sure that they don't lose the, the basics, because it's easier to just move on and easy to forget. Our SMART goal around science, by spring of two thousand thirteen, thirty-five percent of Columbia Heights High School biology students will score at the proficiency level on the MCA science test. Last year, we were at twenty-seven, and that is a huge increase as well. But the reason that we put that there are for several different reasons. Number one, those goals that our teachers set. Number two, the teachers are using Cornell notes, but they're also using AVID interactive notebooks, where on one, they, they, they post everything in their notebook, where on one side is for right-brain activities, and one side is the actual notes, so that they can cross-reference their notes, and it's all in one location. They don't have to go to a textbook, to a notebook, to handout. Everything is put into their notebooks. They have done vertical planning and alignment at the high school, and we have redesigned our high school alignment. We used to have biology taught at 10th grade with a physical science course at the, at ninth grade. Now we have environmental science at ninth grade. We have a physics with astronomy at 10th grade, and biology is now taught at 11th grade. So we're kind of in that transition year where we have very small amount of biology courses. Next year, the 10th graders will be, will, will have more students, but we feel like having the foundation in science with two courses instead of just one will help improve those scores as well. And then a SMART goal around behavior. By June of two thousand thirteen, the number of students sent on referral for behavior will decrease by ten percent, and by June of two thousand thirteen, the number of incidents resulting in out-of-school suspension will decrease by ten percent. We had fifteen of our department chairs last year attend a training, and they follow through with this, and it was called Top Twenty Training: Emotional Intelligence in the Classroom. I still hear our staff talking about some of the key terms, and they, they still use some of these things in their classroom, but we are researching a school-wide system, and through that, you know, we're going to have something different implemented next year. Analysis of current rules, strategies for improvement. We have a, a committee of teachers that meet and constantly review what's working for us, what's not working for us, and to try to make our rules so that students can achieve success, but that we can still maintain the order in our building. And we have developed around, we have done a lot of development around engagement in the classroom through AVID and through other programs, and when there's engagement, there's less behavior issues. So we're hoping to see that. And we have, at the high school, have a college and career readiness goal, and this is one just specific for us, and this says by September fifteenth of two thousand thirteen, the number of graduates from Columbia Heights High School will increase by four percent. The state is looking for ninety percent within the next five years and a hundred percent within the next ten years, and so they have us on a two percent increase. They've told us what they'd like our growth to be, but we feel that through a lot of the programming that we have and a lot of the collaborations that we have, we can achieve this goal. And then, and we have September fifteenth as a date, because students who graduate and meet the requirements in the summer, all the way up through September fifteenth, count in our graduation rates for this current year. By September of two thousand thirteen, we also have a goal that the number of students entering college will increase by ten percent. This year, remember, it was sixty percent, so we're hoping for seventy percent. And so teachers set their personal goals. We had one, we had them set one around college and career readiness this year as well. We have AVID, and then there's another acronym up there, WICER, and WICER is the AVID curriculum, and it stands for writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And all of the strategies in, in AVID support those five elements. And by having that, students are then better prepared when they go to college. We have put ramp-up to readiness into our advisory programs, and it is a hundred percent in our Leadership Nine Academy class as well, where students are setting goals and, and looking at what they'd like to do in the future, and they're starting really early. And I can't wait to tell you about something else that we're doing. So college application week, we started that last year as a pilot school from the Minnesota State Department of Education, and this year, we continued it, and next year, every year, we've improved it, and we revamp, and we try to figure out something new and creative that we can do to get more students applying for college. And we are doing a lot of data review and discussions around college entrance scores and data, especially now that we have some more data that we can actually find our students in college. So our writing initiative, I talked about AVID and the strategies that we use, and that WICER, the writing and the reading have been our focus. The district made a ten percent goal, and we as a school did. So our English department has worked really hard over the last year and a half, and they have done their curriculum review around the Common Core standards, and they have piloted one-to-one laptops this year, and they are also using an online grading program, so students can write more essays, and the program grades the grammatical errors. And so students can constantly be revamping that while the teachers are working with them on the content. And so we've worked with the Minnesota Writing Project this year, and many of our teachers have started an e-portfolio. We gave a workshop earlier this year where they all got to dabble with it, but there are some that have really taken it and run with it. Our college and career readiness initiative, I invite you all Thursday, because Thursday is our second annual college and career fair, where last year, we had twenty-five, we had twenty-five colleges and businesses represented and community organizations represented. This year, we have over forty, and it's growing. Last year, we brought the eighth graders up. This year, we're bringing two out of three of the school's fifth-grade groups up. Highland and Valley View will be walking over. It's a little tougher for North Park, but Valley View and Highland will be walking over this year. College application week, once again, was piloted. We have a program called Genesis Works, and that's a work program that, where students actually, they apply, they interview. And when it started, we had two kids in it, and then we had eight, and then this year, we've had seventeen, and we have over forty applicants for next year, and they think that they might, they're looking for a good round thirty, and that's very exciting, because our students make ten dollars an hour, and they work at fantastic companies in the community, such as Medtronic and Thrive and Financial, and they're doing IT work, and they're really getting that hands-on experience to build their resumes as well. We adopted the ramp-up curriculum this year in our advisory and leadership classes. Our Leadership Academy classes also do a lot around college and career setting, goal-setting. We have ninety-eight percent of our staff trained in AVID. We had two new people, but we've done a lot of training with them. They just weren't trained by specific AVID people. We have a fantastic partnership, as Board Member Myers was talking about, with nine sixteen, and sending our students to the work programs at Century College. Work Experience Expansion has over fifty-five students this year, which is very exciting. They're out in the community, and they're earning high school credit for working. And we have a committee of staff members that have been formed to constantly review this data and to try to figure out ways to support our students. And we have, through Ann Dillard, she has created Dress for Success Days at the high school, and our choice is your students get to go and hear African-American speakers here. They're coming from the professional community, and they're hearing about what they need to be successful, and they dress for success. It's really fun to have on our campus. So here are some pictures. We have several about our college and career readiness goal. Last year's, these are some pictures of last year's college and career fair. Somebody looking familiar right there on the edge. And those are the eighth graders last year. Look at what a beautiful day it was when they walked up on that Thursday wearing shorts. So it, it was very well-attended last year, but this year, we're just anticipating great success, and we have worksheets to go along with it for the fifth graders and the eighth graders this year, so that they can start, know what to talk to the colleges about this year. Last year, as I said, we had our first graduating AVID class last year, and so there are just a couple pictures of them at their banquet and at the graduation. And College Possible, as you see, these are our highlight programs, because we have ninety-nine point six percent attending college. So that's this year's current College Possible group. Last year, we started a, a program where we send our freshmen, MCA testing at the high school level is two days for our juniors and sophomores, because the writing and the math, the reading and the math tests are two days long, but the writing, they only write one essay, and it's only a one-day-long essay. So on the day when the sophomores and juniors are testing, we've been sending our students to college. Last year, our freshmen went to St. Olaf. This year, they went to the University of Minnesota, and you can see their tour guide there, and they had a presentation about what the University of Minnesota has to offer. Much more cloudier day there, but it's just such a great experience and asking them when they come back into the building, how was it? And they say, now I know what I need to do. And hearing those comments is very powerful. We have an arts and engineering initiative. We have a collaboration between Columbia Academy engineering teachers and the high school, and they've been led through our teaching and learning, and the University of Minnesota has represented themselves at these meetings as well, to really make sure that we are cutting edge in our engineering program at all secondary levels. We have been investigating at the high school level about changing our engineering space, and we have a team, our, our team has developed new courses and opportunities for 21st century skills and cutting-edge technology, such as a new revamped TV production-type course next year. We are offering engineering courses to the older students. It's just very exciting to see all these things happen. This is our arts initiative as well. We have collaborative vertical teaming between our secondary and our high school as well, and we have new courses in technology, digital imagery, and photography, but they use the creative, uh, artistic perspective, which is a little different. They're both offering computer courses, but it's just the perspective of them. Our first robotics team has participated in four years now, or the first robotics competition at the University of Minnesota. We offered, this year, in our arts program, we offered an extracurricular of the one-act play. It was kind of cute. It was a little half-hour play, and it was a comedy. And we received record number of awards in our Scholastic Sister City and State Art Competitions in Art. So I've got some of that to show you. The Minnesota Scholastic Art Award Gold Key Recipients, they have gold, silver, they have different levels. We received three this year, which is pretty phenomenal, and these were their, these were their pieces of art. This is our robotics program, and the robotics competition just happened, so these are last year's robotics pictures, but we partner with BAE Systems down in northeast Minneapolis, and our students go down, they get cleared. Those are the BAE people, along with our high school students, and you can see in the top left, those are the students. It goes to the computer. They find out their task. They figure it out in the computer, and the students work on that, and then the final product is the University of Minnesota competition down at the bottom. And then our engineering department, you see two students. We expanded our engineering class for the pre-AP that has, it was a semester-long and now it's a year-long. So I'm going to show you a video here of the first semester activity, which is, I'll kind of explain it when it's in the process of playing, so let's hope that this works. So basically here, the task is, is that they have weights, and they have to, they build this crane a hundred percent through the laser printer and through design, and the students will lift the weight up, and they have to put it on three different level buildings without moving the crane. So you'll see them and see how successful they were.
Building one.
Okay, so they go through and they do the three different levels of the building. And then, this is the roller coaster project of the students that you just saw, and this is a, where did it go? This is just a quick little video of just watching it roll. So there's a little ball on that incline.
That looks purple, doesn't it?
Yeah, really.
And it made it. So we have parent engagement committee, where we are doing some exciting things to try to get more parents into our building. A secondary, it's always harder to get parents in, in the building at the high school level. So we've tried tailgating parties at the beginning of the year. We had our first informational PTO meeting. The high school hasn't had a PTO in quite some time, and we had eleven parents come, and we have the next one set for May ninth. So high school parents, if you're out there, please come to the media center on May ninth. We are doing more all calls, and we're doing them in English and in Spanish. We had REACH, and we have a Latino community liaison who works with our families, and they do breakfast, and they give a lot of information. And we changed our parent-teacher conferences to go out of the Highlander Center, because parents really liked the parking lot being so close, and we love feedback from parents. And we have a committee that works on that. And so here are some pictures of the REACH And so, here are some pictures of the REACH graduation in the top left, the Latino family breakfasts in the bottom left, the FAFSA informational night that I talked about earlier on the top right. And then, that's just an example of the parents participating in the AVID family night. We have an Enrollment and Marketing Initiative. We actually have a committee of teachers who are working to look at what we're doing within our building to keep our students and then what we can do to get more students who choose not to come to us. So, we have done various things. We are looking at online learning components and hybrid courses and things of that nature to try to get, entice more students here. We are, this committee, we talked about it and when the drama department scaled the heights to talk about the play, we actually had the newspaper and staff members and administration went and walked the community with them and knocked on doors and got to talk to our community. And it was actually a really, it was cold, but it was a really fun Saturday morning two weeks ago. Once again, we have the new PTO starting and we've started things within our students about class competitions. And they get, monthly, we're checking attendance, grades, improvement on tardies, whatever it is, we're looking at all kinds of data and we're rewarding our students with movie nights or we had root beer floats the other day. And so, when the classes win, they're kind of excited about that and we announce it in announcements. So, you talked about the piece, Tower Heritage Design, and so, I just want to showcase some of the things that we have in our building. This is a picture and although the picture is very small, if you look and scale to where the students are, look at how high those pictures are. I mean, it was basically the width of the boardroom here. And it was awe-inspiring what the work these students can do. And the first picture's around education, the second is around labor, third one's recreation and the fourth one's our diversity. And we have an amazing group of kids and I get the goosebumps and I'm so proud of them every time I talk about them, so. And then, just some other pictures. We have a fantastic partnership with all of our community. Our police department started a brand-new teen academy this year where it was two weeks long. They took them on a trip, they showed them what they do, they brought in dogs. I mean, it was all about law enforcement and what that has to offer. But overall, we have heights pride in everything that we do. And so, there's a picture of our football team, which saw success this year. And so, I wanted to showcase them in having, having wins this year. And before we talk about graduation, there's just one more, well, there's one more video that I-
On your mark! Get set!
I won't do the whole thing because it is a little long.
Go!
Our students are innovative. These boats were designed completely by the students and are cordial and duct tape. And they're floating. Well, it didn't work right. So, here we go. But it was, it was a really fun thing to watch them try to get to the other side of the pool and cheer each other on. We're trying everything that we can in our building to see students find success and to support them in all facets. So, graduation is the end goal, which is why that picture's up there, coming up very soon and we're very excited about that. So, that is what's happening at the high school. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments?
Only that little bit? High school has so much happening in it that I had to pare it down.
I just want to say, as a high school parent, I've noticed the increased communication and it's really made a big difference. So, kudos on that. It's really noticeable.
Thank you.
And talking about College Possible, it fits right into our scholarships. Not only do we want to prepare kids to go to college, but help fund them too, so.
Absolutely. And thanks to the community for helping us with that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, sure.
And is the robotics team going to come here and give us a presentation?
I will ask them.
I would love it. It is so much fun.
They didn't do that last year. We will make sure that they, I will find out if the robot is still working.
That's okay. They can just bring it in anyway.
Okay.
I could still love to see it.
Perfect.
Well, again, it sounds like there's a lot of great things going on and, yeah, we have issues, but we have a plan to deal with them and I have to believe that we're not unlike other high schools in the state. So, high school's a challenging time, certainly was for me. And hang in there.
Oh, we love what we do.
We know. And it shows.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Strategic Direction C, knowing and honoring who we are to build strong relationships. And this is Nicole Halby, Director of Student Services, Mr. Fort, Valley View Elementary Principal. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Cute, I turned to Director Hennickens and I said, "How do I exit out of their presentation?" He goes, "Escape." Thank you, Director Hennickens. We're here to present, Principal Fort and I are here to present, there, Strategic Plan C. And you'll see a lovely picture of one of our graduating classes of REACH. And REACH, the acronym, stands for Realizing Educational Achievement in Columbia Heights. So, it's very clever. They came up with that name as a group. And we're very proud of all of the buildings and the families participating in the REACH graduation, helping their kids as partners. And we're really supportive in this district of parents as partners in their child's educational process. So, we're very proud of that. So, we wanted to start with that slide. There's our mission statement, which you'll see in all the presentations that Chair Bardell read, our core values, which also are in the boardroom, our vision for 2015, what we intend to create. And then, highlighting our, for Strategic Plan C, knowing and honoring who we are to build strong relationships. Superintendent Kelly always talks about the three Rs and one of those is relationships. So, we're going to talk about the Strategic Plan, Direction C. And this begins to look very familiar to the board and to the audience regarding how we rate them and rank them. I'll just review quickly that Level 1 would be the red, that's intervention level. Level 2 would be a high concern. Level 3 is baseline. Level 4, progressing. And Level 5 is vision. Like we like to say, 99.9% to Level 5, we can always improve on that .1%. So, C1 is increased enrollment in pre-advanced placement and advanced placement classes for students of color to be commensurate with their peers. And as you can see, we're at Level 4, so we're very solid in that, that the high school that just finished their nice presentation does a fantastic job in encouraging all kids who want to take advanced placement classes to do so. And the pre-AP classes are at the middle school and at the high school. And then, you'll note, if it's not highlighted, you'll see on the right what timeline we're going to be able to collect that data. So, enrich curriculum with a variety of cultural perspectives in 80% of the courses. And we're working in collaboration with Duane Burkas, Director Duane Burkas in Teaching and Learning on making that happen. And then, family involvement, such as the REACH program. 40 to 49% of the targeted families participated. And what that means is that, under the direction of Teaching and Learning and Coordinator Jane Reardon, who spearheads the REACH program with many, many of our employees that work in the district and volunteers, they invite parents that would benefit from REACH. And so, we really want 40 to 49% of those who are invited to participate in our programs. Equity teams established at each building with a variety of employee groups. We're at Level 5. Six out of the six buildings are implementing plans for equity teams. Cultural family events. We always hear about the board members attending all these wonderful events. And we'd like to see each building at least three times per year having cultural family events. Reducing the suspensions and referrals of student of color. 25, 21 to 25% difference between the referred student demographics and the general population. So, we're at a little bit of a high concern there. We're working on it. It actually has improved from the previous year. Licensed staff demographics as compared to student populations. And so, we compare ourselves to the six districts around us. And so, we're at, we're at a pretty solid level in that area. It's a conversation that all the districts are having. And then, on 8 and 9, again, we're, we will be collecting that data next year. 8 is students and families feel welcome into district schools measured by family satisfaction and climate surveys. So, those will be going out in the spring and then next winter as well. And then, the digital divide access after school hours. Director Hennickens is working with our department and with the schools at doing a survey to ask students and families, "What kind of access do you have to the Internet?" So that we can, as a district, try to meet the needs of kids and families that don't have access. So, do you want to talk about the different levels where we're at? This is all the fun stuff with the numbers.
Yeah, I think, good evening, everyone. I think you've basically discussed all the different levels. What I was gonna prepare to do was to talk about the matrix right, this comes right after this.
Okay, so, this is just another way to look at the levels if you don't like looking at the colorful chart.
As Nicole mentioned, C8 and C9 are going to be assessed next year, 2013, 2014. On the matrix, C1 through 7 represents 60% of the total of 100% of a weighted score. So, again, those last two, C8 and C9, will be assessed next year. Maximum score for those seven goals is 2.5 and our score was 1.5 out of the 2.5. Obviously, as stated before, the closer the Level 5 on each of those areas, then the higher the score. Our goal is to be as close to Level 5 as possible. What we did, the two lowest scores we had were C3 and C6. And those are the ones that are below baseline. So, at least we, minimally, we want to be at baseline, which is Level 3. So, that's why we made a decision to target our SMART goals at C3 and C6. I'm going to talk about C3 and Nicole's going to talk about C6.
So, C6 is to reduce suspensions and referrals of students to reflect the general population from 22.9% difference between referred student demographics and the general population to 18% difference. So, we would like to narrow that gap, as you saw in the high school's presentation. And if I were here, which I will be in the summer to present on DIRZ, on the Discipline Incident Reporting System for the state, we have dramatically gone down in referrals and suspensions across the board and the district behavior is on the upswing. It's improving, but we'd like to decrease it another 5%.
C3, one thing that's different is this year, we have, we now have a District Family Involvement Committee and each site has a family involvement committee as well. So, that's something that's in addition from previous times. 70% of the districts, of the district are families of color. So, our goal in targeting this particular one is to target more families of color for their, for involvement. This particular strategic direction stated about building relationships. We, we feel like we do that in a, in a number of, number of ways. We do it daily in our classes with students when we individualize and we differentiate instruction for those students. We feel like we do it and do, we help to try to build community when we have our family events, such as some of those that you mentioned about our carnival, our picnic, the movie And we will continue to target, building those relationships with families and events like that. One of the things that we do with our staffs, we have, most of our staff have their own websites so they can be contacted at any time and communicate with families. And of course, email is widely used as, as well as our robo-calls. All the principals at least monthly make calls, updating parents and families about our, what's going on in our school and any, any news and upcoming events that we might have. So, that is our hope, again, is to target those families to get at least to a benchmark level and of course, even, even higher than that. Research shows that families that have, that are involved in their child's education are those families that are more successful in school. So, that's our overall goal is to increase in those aspects.
Thank you very much.
Could I just make one other comment? Just wanted to comment on Director Larken's shirt. That is one attractive shirt that you have on there and I wanted to commend you for modeling it for our community.
Thank you very much.
Where do you, where would you get a shirt like that?
I believe you can stop by Valley View and they have several there.
Okay, well, thank, thank you very much.
Putting in a plug. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Fort and Ms. Halby? Well, thank you very much. We know where we are and onward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Bill Holmgren, who is going to talk to us about health and
Chairman Bardell, School Board Members, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. It's, can't believe it's been a year again already since we talked about health and safety. But the MDE wants us to go through a little more detail with our health and safety program with the, with our boards than we have in the past. So, I'm going to touch on the projects that we're working on and then give you an idea of what we're spending over the next three-year period coming up. Now, something that we do on every year, this is something, I mean, we're mandated by the state of Minnesota, the things that we've got to look at in our buildings. All our elevators have safety inspections on a yearly basis. Anything that we have that lifts anybody up, which we have, we have a few in the district, all have to be inspected. Backflow preventers all have to be tested on a yearly basis. Every year, this protective equipment we need for the custodial unit, so they are looked at every year and whether we need, anything needs to be replaced. Our playgrounds are looked at every year and whether they're safe for our kids to use. And of course, then we have hazardous waste removal, which is really a recycling program that we look at on a yearly basis. The other thing that's, in the whole management program of the, of our health and safety, these are the other pieces that we look at on a yearly basis. We look at all the machine guarding, not only in the classroom, but also in the work areas of the custodial units. Chemical hygiene is looked at, making sure that our chemicals are stored in the, in a safe and a clean way. We have a safety committee that meets on a regular basis. All those activities are involved, are included in our management program. Asbestos is looked at in our buildings on a yearly basis. We're inspected. Anything that looks like it needs to be taken care of or changed out, that is done. Fire alarm, tested every year. We do air quality testing, especially as some of our buildings are getting older. We look at the equipment and make sure that we're still giving clean, fresh air to our students and the volume that, that they want us to do. Our emergency lighting is tested every year. And of course, we have safety training that we do for every single employee of our district on a yearly basis. Of course, and then the administration is also including that management, which is really a big piece of Tom Foley's job, is our health and safety management program. Things that we're working on right now, just to give you an idea of what we're working on, ventilation improvements. And the biggest piece we're looking at, working on that this year is going to be the remodeling project over at Highland and the old kindergarten rooms. There will be a brand-new air handler put onto those rooms as we remodel those. Dryer vent replacement. Actually, this was interesting, this came up with a, our fire marshal inspection, we actually had a vent that actually wasn't venting anywhere, except up into the ceiling. So, we took care of that. Fire alarm replacement. Actually, as our, as our equipment's getting older, we actually replaced our fire alarms in, in both Valley View and Highland this past, this past year. We had a, we had to put some sprinkler heads under kitchen hoods, both in the high school and in Highland. We've had our freezer written up as a health code violation that was replaced. That's the warehouse freezer that's over in Valley View in the warehouse area. Replacement of tile. When we talk about asbestos, you know, we look at, there's quite a bit of tile that was put into buildings years ago that do have a very small amount of asbestos. This tile isn't in any, any way endangered to any of our students or our, or our employees, but we watch this very closely and we replace them in a, in a manner where we're never going to be in trouble with those. But we certainly can't afford to do the whole, the whole district in one year, so we, we spread this over a period of years. And then, the Department of Health has wanted us to include, well, install some new hand-washing sinks and make it more accessible to some of our employees at our kitchen area. So, you can see, this is actually, this is actually one of the freezers that we replaced in the, in the high school last year. I think all the ages of our buildings are pretty- I think all the ages of our buildings are pretty close to the same age, so everything's kinda hitting at once as we, as we move through this. The next one slated to be changed will be at North Park in the very near future. And you see here, the, the ground under the, our play areas are monitored, and this, this material is replaced on a regular basis, so we have a nice soft, soft surface for the children to play on, in our playground areas. Now, just to give you an idea of what we're, what we're spending our money on, Tom and I are very, work very hard not to let our, our levy amount fluctuate on a yearly basis. We don't want to see big increases in the next year go way down, and then we see a big increase come back. You see, we kinda have a goal of staying right around that eight hundred thousand. Of course, if we go lower, that's great, but we don't want to see an eight, and then a seven, and then a nine, if we see big increases. But in 2013, we're spending about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars on our health and safety projects, and the budget going forward, we're looking at this point about seven hundred thousand for next fiscal year, seven thirty-seven on the year after. Of course, as things come up, we have to, once in a while, we have to add small things. Usually, there's small things at this point, but I think we have everything that's, that we know about, that's larger is all included, but we might see, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollar fluctuations pretty easily in this program as we go forward. So is there any questions on that?
No, I, I just actually had a comment. First year, I think I was on the board about two years ago, you had brought forward the ten-year facility plan, and we did a tour on all of that.
Yes.
So it looks, so you are already, it looks like you'd already preempted what they're asking now, because you've already had it written down. I was actually wondering if the, the new members might be able to get some of that information that we had received.
Oh, it's a very good idea, and actually, we are, we are actually having a meeting here next week, talking about financing of our, of our schools, and I could certainly include, include that in that, in that meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to make a general comment. I appreciate the, the more comprehensive report, and I also want to comment on the scorecards, too. Just the transparency level is fantastic, and it's great to see more transparency in these issues, as well as the, the daily operations of our district. Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right. We are moving to our action items for this evening. And our first action item is the athletic fee schedule, and we have Bill, the Director of Finance Operations, and Mary Busman, Columbia.
Good evening, Chair, Board, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. We are here for what we hope will be a quick item, and that is to ask for your approval for the revised activities fee schedule for the 2013, 14 school year, as was presented two weeks ago at the board meeting.
At the work study, yeah?
It was...
No, you're right. At the board meeting.
Oh, last week.
Last week.
Last week, it was last week.
Work session.
It was a whole winter ago.
I've been here the whole winter.
Which one?
The days just blend together.
They do. But we did present it to you.
Yes, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it second.
Motion by Lori, second by Ted. Any discussion? Yeah, Lori.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment as far as this new fee schedule, that, that our fees will either be staying the same or will actually be reduced. And, and there's gonna be a lot more consistency on how we award scholarships. So just, just letting everybody know about that.
Okay. Yeah, Ted. I think it's also important to note that the, the goal of the fee structure is to help as many students be involved as possible and to increase. We want students to be involved in our extracurricular activities, so if we can encourage them to this way, that's fantastic.
All right. Any more comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, the board, we asked to approve early childhood fees, early childhood fee schedule. We have Bill and Kristen Stunkel, Director of Community Education.
Good evening, Chair Bardell, members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly. Last week, we also brought our early childhood scholarship fee schedule to your work study for review, and this evening, we're bringing it tonight for your approval. With our early childhood programs, we have ECFE, and we also have our pre-K program. With our pre-K program, it is fee-based, and for those families for whom they're not able to pay the, the fee, then they can apply for a scholarship. With this change in our scholarship program, we would have those families complete the free and reduced lunch form, and that would help to determine, not only based on their family income, which has been our only determinant in the past, but also based on their family's size, what would be an appropriate fee for them to be able to pay. They would work with our early childhood coordinator, Karen Kramer, to make that determination.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion, move that forward?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Lori. Any discussion?
Yeah, Ted. I do, I do think this is a fair way, because when you have more people in your family, it's more of a burden, no matter what your income is, so this takes that into account.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on our agenda is steam pipe replacement bid, and that is Bill.
Chairman Bardell, members of the School Board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Yes, tonight I bring you the, the bid tabulation for the bids to take care of our steam pipe situation we had last winter, where we have a steam pipe that failed in the high school on the backside. We are planning to replace that this summer. You can see the bids came in relatively well. This is actually under budget than what we had anticipated. A low bid is NAC Mechanical and Electrical Services for a hundred ninety-three thousand. There is an alternative bid there, they also have the lowest, well, not, we add them together, they're still the lowest bidder of twenty-one thousand for alternate one. And what this alternate one is, is, is when we take the old pipe out, if we have issues with the pipe that's running from the wall, where it runs through the wall over to the boiler, this pipe may be replaced at the same time, but we will wait and see the condition before we take, make that decision. I'm just looking for, from, to have you award the bid to NAC Mechanical and Electrical Services.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Ted, second by John, any discussion? Seeing none?
I, I just wanted to make a comment. It was, it was kind of interesting that we actually got a lower bid even the second time around than, than we had the first time, so that was pretty, that's pretty awesome. Good work that you put into that.
Yes, I, I was, I was very pleased with how it turned out, and we had, you know, we, we needed to come back and rebid it, and we, and we saw lower prices across the board. It was very good news for us.
And again, this is, this is a very old pipe, that hopefully, this new piping will last us as long as, at least, at least as the old.
Yeah. Well, this is, I, I believe it was nineteen sixty-eight this pipe was put in.
Yeah.
The quality of now, some of these newer pipes that they're putting in actually should give us a longer life than this one has given us.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Looks like Bill again, we're gonna talk about, no, yeah, Bill and Brian Henneken, Director of Technology and Security, we're gonna talk about phone replacements. Sorry, Brian.
That's all right. Chairperson Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Before you have a, a motion to approve for a new phone system in the district, we have bids in, and on the final page of the spreadsheet is actually the bid tabulation. And as you can see, Integra was our low bid at two hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. And I think Bill will share that we were very happy with where things came in, and really happy with what we were presented in, in demonstrations, and we feel confident in asking for your approval to move forward with Integra as the bid award winner.
We also talked about this at...
At a work session, and, and went through kind of the details of reasoning why we're replacing the phone system and some of our needs with our current phone system, and some of our needs that aren't being met by our current phone system and, and moving forward.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura, any discussion?
One of the things that really jumped out at me is that this system is a voiceover IP system, so it's the latest technology, it's more portable, and also, it's also highly reliable compared to what we have now, so the school district needs phones.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, Lori.
The other thing that I actually like about this, too, is that we're gonna get the service for seven years, and we can, that's so potential upgrades and things along those lines, and then there's multiple redundancies in the system. So we don't have a school-wide blackout of the phone system, you know, at the most inconvenient time, so it's, it's got a pricey price tag, but it's, it's definitely something we need to do.
Yes. All right.
A lot of work went into this bidding. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is discontinuance or reduction of programs and positions for 2013, 2014. And we have Elizabeth Rushi and Bill Holmgren here.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the School Board. In January, the School Board adopted a resolution directing the superintendent and administration to consider, consider discontinuing programs and positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures. In doing so, I'm asking you today to adopt a resolution, adopt a resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions due to enrollment and department efficiencies. You have a folder in front of you with a red sheet in it. I will walk through it with you. Seven point two eight FTE licensed and non-licensed high school positions, this is actually lower than the number you saw last week at the work session. We had a final staffing meeting with high school staff last week, administrative staff, and based on enrollment, we were able to adjust that reduction at the high school. One point four two FTE licensed and non-licensed chief positions. The chief program will only be servicing seventh and eighth graders in the thirteen, fourteen school year, so with no sixth graders, there was a reduction in FTE required. Three point oh FTE licensed kindergarten positions. Every spring, the numbers are lower, so we staff based on actual enrollment. So as enrollment numbers go up, we will add back kindergarten positions if necessary. For both the licensed K-12 special ed positions and the K-12 education assistant positions, these reductions are due both to a decrease in student instructional minutes, as well as due to the federal sequestration. District-wide K-12 activities position, we're going from two to one position. And then the last three are all standard operating procedures, teacher positions with licensure variances, teachers on one-year contracts, serving in a long-term subposition, and then all our positions that are non-renewed for performance. And then due to confidentiality, the superintendent's update will provide a more detailed breakdown for you this week.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So I'll move.
Motion by Laura, second by Ted. Any discussion?
I would just say, we, we have looked at this in as much detail as we can, given the confidentiality nature of it, so we want to assure the public of that.
Yeah, Lori.
And, and a lot of, a lot of these positions are based strictly on making sure that we don't have teachers teaching empty classrooms, and this is all dependent upon guest, best guesses for our enrollment for next year. So this is, this is something we do every year, and they work really, really, really hard on trying to make the best guess.
I guess maybe I just want to reiterate quickly, is we are down a hundred and forty students in our high school over the last two years, and that's really what is driving the, on the look at this budget and trying to balance it so that we don't have too many staff members next year, and we aren't gonna run our budget at a, at a deficit.
Thank you. All right, let me just read the other parts of the resolution. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Thirteen adopted a resolution on January twenty-second, 2013, directing the administration to make recommendations for reduction in programs and positions, and whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the School Board, be it resolved by the School Board Independent School District Number Thirteen as follows, the following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies, which Elizabeth went through, so I won't repeat it. There's no more discussion. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Landware?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Resolution has passed. All right. The last action item this evening, the last scheduled action item, is the National School Board Association membership. The board will be asked to approve membership in the National School Board Association, and I can't remember, was it the work study of the last School Board meeting? It was, yes. Was it my memory's faulty? Last week. We kinda went over this, and we saw the dues and... I'll move that forward.
I'll second that.
Motion by Scott, second by Laura. Any discussion on National School Board membership?
I would just say, we, we just went to the conference, and being part of the National School Board Association allows us to get reduced fees for that, and also allows us to bring back some of the best ideas in the country to our district, so I would hope that we continue to get as much value as we can from our membership.
Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, next, I know we have one board topic. A, a suggestion came up regarding what the School Board should, should or shouldn't wear at graduation, and, and the question was whether the School Board should wear robes, and if not, what should they wear? So, I don't know if I... So the, the, the issue is, 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 you know, the School Board can decide whether we wish to wear, you know, the robes or not, and if we decide not, my suggestion would be that it would be business attire, you know, muted tones, that sort of decorum for graduation. What's taken place in the past? What is... In the past, we have worn robes. I don't know how long that, that... Yeah, go ahead.
It's been mixed in this district, as it is in other districts, many times, School Boards represent the community, so they dress in, in business attire, and we have done that through some superintendents, and we've had a period where we went with robes, which does raise the question, are they members of the faculty, or are they community stakeholders representing? And what admin has always done is defer to the board on what you would like to do as a board, so it really is up to this board and how they like to continue their own traditions.
And that's, I'm, I'm the one that brought up the issue, so, and that's exactly the argument that I would put forward, is, is we do, we are community representatives, and besides the fact that robes can be uncomfortable, which is a minor reason, but it is a reason nonetheless, I, I think it's important for us to look like the people that we represent, which is the community, and, and we're not, we're not faculty, we're, we're the community. That's my reasoning.
I understand from, oh, go ahead, Laura.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I understand in inquiry that a lot of the districts in our area, at graduation, the board does wear business attire, so, you know, it's not anything out of the ordinary or unusual, or, you know, anything like that. So, and I inquired, you know, just to help educate my, me.
It's just the one day of the year, I don't have to figure out what I gotta wear, so...
There's that.
There is that. I, I think we're, I think it kind of helps us more identify with the students, you know, I, I, I don't know, I rather like it, but, you know, whatever the board decides, I'll go along with. Let me see.
Other?
I...
Other?
I guess I hadn't really thought, put much thought into it or thought about it, but now that I kinda hear, you know, different perspectives, I kinda tend to agree with, um, maybe business attire seems more appropriate as a board member than, but it really, I don't really have a pref- strong preference one way or the other.
Is this something that has to be definitive tonight or not?
No.
I just, I'd be curious to see what Member Lee has to say as well. I mean, it's-
How about if I put it out in the superintendent's update, um, and then you can just pull back in to, um, Dawn Hoyam, and then we'll take account of the board that way. Would that be okay?
Is that okay?
I'll give you that information.
For the record, it doesn't matter to me either way, I guess.
I just wanted to bring it up because I know depending on what we wanna do, you know, we don't wanna put the district in a rush mode if, you know, we decide, so I just wanted to-
Is that something you would have to, the district would have to, do they already have robes or is that something they have to go and get?
You order them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we rent them every?
We rent them. We decide to order them. All right.
I do have one other thing too.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know we, one, just one request, I know we, we talked about these, uh, the goals of, you know, the various schools. It would be nice, uh, at some point to see, I get a report of how they've done compared to their goals each year. And maybe I've seen that, I'm just not recalling it, but, uh, I think it's great, the schools are setting goals and those are SMART goals, which, you know, stand for s- you know, measurable, achievable goals. It'd be great to get a report to see if they've actually achieved those goals and, and how close they've come, so, just something that struck me tonight.
Uh, how do you mean, like when they said that their goal is to increase it by ten percent?
Exactly.
How they do from that one there, so-
Right.
The progress from what they're providing for us now.
Right. And having the goal itself is, is great because it gives a, a, uh, something to strive for, but to actually see if they make the goal, um, would be great to know too.
I think that, well, that's easily done. I think that, um, in some presentations, you did see that, and particularly the elementary ones, um, it was not reflected in tonight's presentation, but I'm certain that we can do something about that.
Great, thank you.
All right. No one else has any topics? I just have one quick one, and that is, uh, personally thank, um, Chloe Myers for, um, getting us together on a personal note to, uh, to get a brick for the heritage, um, so thank you, Laura, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
It was a very good idea. Um, I wish I would've thought of it, but I'm glad somebody did.
You're welcome.
Thanks for, um, coordinating it and everything else. Really appreciate it.
Easy to do. Um, there are two, uh, community events, I believe, that are coming up as well, and I think they're both on the same night. Um, one is the boosters are putting, uh, are doing their annual, uh, dinner. I think that's, is that next?
It's not the eighth.
That's not till the eighth.
The eighth of May.
Yeah.
That's before our next board meeting. And, um, and then the, uh, or is it right, no, it's right before the next board meeting. Um, and then there's also the, um, Neighborhood Watch is also, I believe, on the same night as well. So, um, if you wanna get involved with the community, make sure that you, um, uh, check those things out, you know, through our, um, our city, our city web pages. We have a great relationship with the city of Columbia Heights and, um, the school district. We work really well together, so we, uh, cross-pollinate all of our good ideas, so.
Thanks for the reminder.
We can't forget about Hairspray at the end of the month.
That's right, yeah.
I, I, I knew there was a play coming up, but I didn't catch the title of it, so have fun.
The retirement recognition is coming up too, right?
We have our career celebration, um, coming up, and that is what's May first.
Yeah.
A lot of things coming up in May. Yes, yes. But Hairspray, you can catch not only this weekend, but the following weekend, so you have double trouble if you wanna see it twice.
All right.
And I heard all new microphones. Will you aim it please?
With that, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I'll adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-five.
Thank you.